I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chair moves for approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Gary's? Announcements, December fourteenth, we have Facilities Committee meeting right here at seven a.m. And next School Board meeting is January ninth at seven p.m. right here in the community room. And next we're gonna move on to the Truth in Taxation.
She's ready tonight.
Yeah, I'm ready. Alright, I'm ready.
Alright.
Good evening. It's December, and so it's time for us to conduct our annual Truth in Taxation hearing. This will be for taxes payable in twenty-three, which will be our local property tax revenue for our school district for next school year. So we always do that one year early. Before we jump into the details of the exact levy figures, I'd like to take just a moment to review the levy process. In August, the school, or the state of Minnesota opens up the summer levy system for school districts. And this aligns with the state funding levels, and we go ahead and put in our estimates. After that point, we need to give all this information to Hennepin County after the school board certifies the proposed levy in September. And we always do that at our September board meeting, and we certify that at maximum. Again, then we turn that over to Hennepin County in October. They calculate the taxes, and then in mid-November, all property tax owners, or property owners would have received their truth and taxation statements in the mail. And part of that indicated on there that all jurisdictions need to have a hearing, the counties, the cities, and the school districts. And so that's, our hearing is tonight. And then the last step of the levy cycle is the school district needs to certify the levy. And that final step will be an action item on the regular agenda later this evening. I mentioned that all of the taxing jurisdictions need to have a hearing. And again, there's many items listed on your tax statement. And again, the information we're talking about this evening is the school district portion. We need to cover four items at our hearing this evening. We need to make sure that we're covering the conversation of taxes for the twenty-three payable year. Again, revenue received for next school year. We need to display our, and discuss our current budget. And we need to cover the property tax increase that we're asking for and the line item of what makes that up. And we also need to give our, any public time to comment, which we will certainly do that. Displayed on the screen before you is the district revenue and expenditure budget for fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. This gives a really nice one-page summary of the actual approved final document for last school year that was presented by our auditors, as well as our twenty-three current year budget and our projected fund balances. There was a change in the statements this year, and this information actually was included in the property tax statements. And so you may have noticed an additional sheet, which is great information to receive. In addition to getting that in your property tax statement, we also have this posted on our district website. And we published this also in the newspaper following our audit presentation by Bergen KDB, our district auditor. And then one step further, we have our entire audit and financial documents on our website for the public to view. You're welcome to take a look at those. And if you also would like a copy, please contact myself or Superintendent Borg. Before we get into the details by fund of the request of the property taxes this year, I'd like to stop and just take a look at the overview of all funds. We have the ability to levy in three of our funds, General Fund, Community Education, and Debt Service. And this slide shows a comparison of last year, what we had talked about at our Truth in Taxation hearing and what we're proposing this evening. And you can see last year at this time, our local property tax request was fifteen million, two hundred and nine thousand. And again, we'll go through more details shortly, but the overall levy request is fifteen million, five hundred and forty-four, or a two-point-two percent increase. The first fund we'll take a little deeper dive into is General Fund. General Fund, as I mentioned, it's our largest fund. It's where we house most of the operations of the school that serves all of our students' activities in the classroom, instructional supplies, equipment. The General Fund request of the levy is ten million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, just slightly over. Our two largest changes compared to last year was the operating referendum on the very top. We have an inflation factor with that, and so we had growth there. And the second category that was the larger change was capital projects levy. And that, it changes due to property tax values. And we all know what happens to values, although it's spread over more individuals, or all of our levies are spread over more individuals. But that particular levy is tied to our property tax values, so again, we did see a change there. We have other, every other line item is listed before you. We have a lot that are tied to safety. We have safe schools. We have long-term facility maintenance, having a safe environment for our school, operating capital, and et cetera. The bottom line, we are requesting in our General Fund a lower increase than the prior year by just over three thousand dollars, or point zero three percent less. Community Education houses our early childhood programs, after-school enrichment, preschool screening, school-age childcare, just to name a few. Our levy in this category is just under six hundred, excuse me, eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand. Our largest change was a one-time levy adjustment for school-age childcare. And they always take a one-year look back based on those approved programs, expenses. And the last fund is Debt Service. And I always like to think of this as kind of the mortgage payment that you make, just like you do at home. It's our, we have the opportunity to levy our principal and interest payments that will be coming due next school year. And these are both voter-approved. They were for our 2012 bond, our 2016 bond, and lastly, the 2018 abatement program. So we have those three items, and the principal and interest calls for the authority to increase that by two-hundred thousand dollars to meet our amortization schedules. This chart before you displays the five-year history of West Tonka certified school tax. Again, this is the last five years. Over this five-year timeframe, we've had increases due to increased enrollment. We talked earlier about the capital projects levy being tied to property tax values, and we had increases there that were approved by our voters. And also, we had a voter-approved increase in renewal of our operating referendum. And there's many other initiatives, but we're really proud. Over that five-year timeframe, the average increase per year is two-point-six-seven percent. We take our residents' property taxes very seriously, and we are proud of how much we've accomplished for our students for an average of two-point-six-seven, again, during this timeframe. Accountability, good stewardship are of utmost importance to us. And for this local funding that we receive, we are most grateful. This chart displays all of the school districts in Hennepin County and how their taxes compare to one another on an estimated average house value of four-hundred-and-forty-one thousand. I know it's a little bit difficult to see, but the red bar at the bottom is West Tonka Public Schools. And you can see that we clearly have the lowest school taxes in Hennepin County. On Tuesday, November fifth, 2019, West Tonka School District residents approved a two-step levy in support of our students. Instead of asking for the larger increase upfront, this levy accessed funds only as they were needed by the district. So it was in a two-step process. This two-step levy will gradually now bring West Tonka's per pupil funding closer to neighboring districts like Orno and Minnetoka. The second step of the levy includes inflation and three-hundred-and-fifty dollars per student. And this will be for taxes payable in 2024 to 2029. And so you can see on the far right-hand column, the second step is next year. So the tax hearing that we're here for tonight is the green bar. And so we want to make sure that we're communicating with our taxpayers. It's, again, it's a very high priority to us, and that's why we are reviewing this important two-step timeline this evening. Again, being a good fiscal steward of district dollars, we did contact our financial advisors, wondering how our taxpayers would be impacted when this second step came in. And this, again, is the same chart, schools in Hennepin County, a four-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollar home. But we had them add for us just a snapshot of what if that two-step levy was applied, how will that affect our district? And that is represented by the orange line. So even with the application of that second step of the voter-approved levy to support our students, we will again, again, clearly have the lowest property taxes in the county. At this time, I'd like to invite Superintendent Kevin Borg to make any comments or leave out some questions.
So, one, thank you, Kathy. I think the proposal that you saw here today on final is the same as what we presented at our September meeting. It was a two-point-two percent increase. And so really, there, anything of change wasn't of much substance. It's, I think it was the same as what that was, but if there was any little changes, we were presenting a two-point-two at that time. Proud of what we can accomplish with the funds that we have, proud of the community's support of our schools. I appreciate Kathy going through not just this report, but also what's coming up. So I thought that was a thorough presentation. Anybody in the audience have questions for us? We'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I want to thank you, Ken.
What was the number increase? I couldn't read it from here. For what, you're proposing twenty-four, twenty-five? Going from...
For the two-step levy?
Average four-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars.
Okay. Alright, so...
Go to the next one that shows the orange bar.
Oh, okay. Alright, so for the four-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollar house, the red bar without the two-step levy reads twelve ninety-seven. So just under thirteen hundred dollars. And then with the two-step levy applied, it's thirteen sixty-four.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for all the detail on this.
You're welcome.
Do you have any other questions?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
You want to just finish up your finance report?
I will. Yes, I have, as long as I'm up here, I'm just gonna finish my report. The other slides are really brief. And thank you for being here and for your questions. See, I'm just gonna give just a quick update on our enrollment. We, again, track our enrollment every month, so very important part of our budget. And now that, you know, the first month is over, we tend to settle in each year, and we've done that again. We have just a gain of two students over the prior year, so that, we'll use a lot of these estimates in our revised budget. Revenue, we have collected nine-point-eight million or twenty-eight-point-four percent of our budget. Expenses, we've expended twelve, just over twelve million, or thirty-five-point-three percent of our budget. Again, looking, everything's pacing along well, and we're going to use all these values again for the revised budget that we're preparing. Thank you to the board members who are involved at the Finance Committee. We have been having some valuable meetings, you know, really studying our levy data. We reviewed this Truth in Taxation hearing presentation tonight. We are geared up for our budget calendar, and again, we always look at enrollment and the constant conversation of facilities and how we keep those current for our students. The only other items going on in our office are budgets and more budgets. We're working on revised, and then as soon as that's done, we're gonna move into the adopted. So, any questions for me? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any members of the public that wish to come before the board speaks? Thank you for coming. Then we'll move on to the Treasury report.
Cash donations for November twenty-twenty-two began with anonymous. Model West Tonka High School, one thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. Cherry's Aid Foundation, West, Model West Tonka High School, forty-three dollars and sixty-six cents. Northwest Tonka Alliance Cross Country Club, fifteen hundred dollars. Northwest Tonka Girls Soccer, Northwest Tonka Girls Soccer uniforms, thirty-nine hundred and five dollars and twenty-five cents. Cave Riley Volleyball Club, four hundred dollars. American Legion Auxiliary, student scholarships, American Legion scholarships, five thousand dollars. Grandview Middle School, PTO, Grandview Middle School, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. Shirley Hills PTO, Shirley Hills Drumline Jerseys, one thousand, eighty dollars. Tracy Gunderson, Shirley Hills Books for Ellie Hart Memorial, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety cents. The third one, West Tonka Wellness, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-seven cents. American Legion Special Education, two hundred dollars. Here-to-date total donations, fifty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety cents. There were no non-cash contributions this month. And Mr. Chair and fellow board members, I looked at the check register and all seems to be in order.
Thanks a lot, Ralph. We'll move on to the Student Rep Report. How you doing? Alright.
Ah, alright, so I'll just keep it short and sweet tonight. Students Senate celebrated Staff Appreciation Week in November. Students gave staff members at the high school personalized mugs, as well as breakfast on Friday of that week. We are so thankful for everything that our staff does for us, and we hope they feel that way. This Wednesday marks the kickoff to Students Senate's weekend holiday drive. Donations of baby care products, personal care products, household cleaning products, and household paper products are all accepted, as well as checks and digital donations. In the arts, Madjos sang at the Orno Tree Lighting Ceremony this past Saturday, and are gearing up for the holiday season. Throughout this month, they will be singing carols at Lord Fletcher's and other locations around the area. The cast of Oliver completed their run last month, and despite numerous complications and illnesses, still managed to put on a very successful show. NWHS Theatre's director, Jamie Harms, announced the spring play this past Friday, The Play That Goes Wrong. Auditions will be held December nineteenth, with a first read-through on December twenty-first. Today is the Winter Band Concert in the Performing Arts Center, and the Holiday Choir Concert follows December twelfth at seven p.m. In athletics, the girls swim and dive team placed third overall at state, which was their best ranking in history. Senior Jalen Storm placed second in the fifty-meter freestyle, and Katherine Dueck also placed second in the two-hundred meter. Wrestling and Wrestling Cheer celebrated a first-place win at Frilly this weekend. The women's basketball team has a busy season ahead, with a home game against Zimmerman tomorrow, followed by a game at St. Anthony Village and Highland Park later this week. The boys hockey team had a win against JFK last Friday, with Jack Peterson scoring two goals and Mason Evenson having twenty-five saves. The Nordic Ski Team also had a very successful first race of their season. And of course, as we know, we also received the tragic news over the weekend. Julie Crawl passed away due to a brain aneurysm. She was an active and involved member of our community and mother to Sammy Crawl, who is Students Senate's own secretary. Any prayers, thoughts, or donations for the family would be welcome at this time of need. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any School Board committee reports?
No, but I have to add, the dance team actually took first place in varsity kick and varsity jazz at the competition last weekend. And varsity kick actually beat Austin, and Austin was the state champ last year. Yeah, and they destroyed them, so.
Oh, you know all of them?
Yes.
Well, I'll have the gymnastics then.
He's kicking, you see him kicking his leg under the chair there. I think he's part of the team.
Gymnastics also took first, and my niece Reagan took first all around.
Oh, wow.
Which is kinda fun. Really quick, and I guess this can wait till your report, but I'm thinking with the Senate, if they would plan or orchestrate anything, you know, special for Sammy, for, you know, if the kids get involved in anything like that, just to...
Yeah, I tend to have that in them, plenty of...
Okay.
Well, I know Molly's dance team is collecting, they have a little effort going on, collecting money for that whole thing too, so.
Yeah. I just got karate and some stuff like that. It's kind of fun with some, this whole extra love to go there, but. Sorry, Mark, you're up.
Hey.
You're on, Mark.
Oh, good. Well, tonight, December is the annual meeting to bring you the results from our 2022 World's Best Workforce Plan for the last school year. And I'll explain a little bit more about what that is and what we do with that. But before I start out, though, it's also timely just to remind ourselves of really the success that we're having in our school system. And it's always fun to get the acknowledgements from outside the district. We know what we're doing. We see the success. But I just want to point out to our board tonight that School Digger, NICH are two organizations that rate school systems. And it's always wonderful when you see West Tonka Public Schools ranked seventh out of four hundred and forty-six school systems. They have five-star overall rating for our schools, and then the NICH rating tenth in the state for 2023. And it's a combination of standard achievement scores, MCAs, AP, ACT scores. NICH gets into surveys and parent opinions, and it's always a compliment to what they're doing with that. So as we get into the World's Best Workforce Plan, just a reminder to all of you, this is by state statute that came in 2013. It's a requirement of all Minnesota public school systems to focus on five goals listed here on the screen. The state of Minnesota wants to make sure all children are ready for school. All third graders can read by the end of that grade level. All racial economic achievement gaps between students are closed. All students are ready for career in college, and all students graduate from high school. And again, that's been enacted since 2013. Sometimes people wonder, "World's Best Workforce," that's just an odd term of a report. That is language in the state statute. Consider it the state's annual report that we do. We have our strategic plan, so if you ever wonder, you get a question, "What is Best Workforce? Where does that come from?" It's state statute. So I'm gonna address the five goals, and I'll take each one by one. If you want to see the full plan, it's on our district website under the academics, drop-down menu. It's all there for you. So the first goal that we have with the World's Best Workforce is all children are ready for school. This involves our kindergarten screening. And what we, what happened in 2022 this fall, we screened one-hundred-and-sixty-nine students for kindergarten. Of those children, one-hundred-and-fifty-one were deemed ready for kindergarten. And eighteen students were referred to either special ed or medical or mental health specialists. That's why we have screening, to catch problems very much if it early started an educational career. So we missed that ninety-five percent marker, but I've also put the trend history in, and you can see we're in the ballpark. And I would, you know, every year, we take anyone that comes into our system. So I would say that eighty-nine percent, there'd be a number of reasons why that is that way, but I would expect that we'll be back up in the nineties come this coming year. That was the result this year.
So, Mark, just a quick question. So, I guess this never dawned on me before, but we don't really touch the kids that much prior to kindergarten. So, I mean, I know that we do, and that parents can opt into some of our programming and our... But I'm surprised that this is a metric or a thing that we have to focus on when we don't really have that much control over it.
Exactly right. And I think, you know, we have to remember what the state's mission is. They are always looking at all the different demographic groups of students. Some excel more than others, and it's just one way to start at the very beginning. How are you doing as a school system with who's coming into your system? And so, yep, I can see your point, but it is, it is a parameter that we have to look at, and you know what, I'll take that.
So it's not so much a measure of performance, it's more of a measure of where we're at, or where we start at a baseline, if you will, yeah.
Yes, very much.
State standards, right?
State standards, yes.
Space settlement. You know, I would suppose kids that are going to the preschool or, you know, the early childhood stuff, probably, I mean, are those kids, would some of those children be, you know, go, go to testing prior to that?
Probably, probably. We know there's students that families have sent their students to our preschool program, they do very, very well. But again, preschool is not required, it's not fully funded. And so, you know, we take them all in, and we like as staff knowing ahead of kindergarten already if there's been some diagnosis or we were aware of what's happening before the first day of school.
Mark, any color on what the ratio is here, I mean, talk about mental health specialists, medical, it seems different, obviously, than the academic aspect of it? Am I misinterpreting here?
No, no, there is, there's many facets of readiness. It's not just academics.
And so, I mean, it's just like a fifty-fifty split?
Oh, I, that I do not have the details. I don't exactly what that, what that is. That's probably private information on there, but we do know the numbers up to that. The next goal going on, all students in third grade achieving grade-level literacy. We measure oral reading fluency. Think of just reading, and how fluent you are in reading a sentence, reading a paragraph. Comprehension, exactly what you think it is. Do you remember what you read? Guided reading level, that is where we assess kids, and we can place them at a certain reading level. And we have grade-level benchmarks with that. We expect kids to grow in their reading level, like from a Level C up to a Level F by the end of second grade. That's what that is. So the results for 2022, the oral reading fluency passing rate, seventy-one percent, about the same as it was in 2021. Comprehension passing rate, eighty-nine percent, went up from 2021. And then the guided reading level, eighty-two percent. And what that means, those percentages are the percentage of students that met the grade-level benchmark, is what it means. We've seen some increases. Again, we're hitting, we're aiming for ninety percent. We really are. We've analyzed the data, we've looked at the results, and what we know is that the problem area is phonics development. Phonics is where kids listen to the sounds of letters, they put them together to make words. So we know what the gap is, what the need is. And so, to address that gap, we've implemented a new language arts program. We've expanded a proven what's called phonemic awareness program into all our kindergarten classes this year. Everybody's teaching is proven program. And there's a lot of professional development happening now with our elementary staff around phonemic awareness, phonics development this year. And then we'll use our fast bridge testing to see where we have our marker in the fall, and we'll be measuring growth in the spring. So we'll continue to focus on that, and again, that ninety percent proficiency rate, that is what we definitely want to aim for.
Do you think COVID, I don't remember the numbers from 2020 at all, but do you think any of this has anything to do with kind of our weird years?
Yeah. We're, I, I never want to use that as the big main excuse for anything. But I will tell you that this data comes from, you know, we're right in the middle of a pandemic, and there are variables there that are really hard to put your thumb on, exactly how that impacted. Well, it impacted kids in many different ways. But we still have to focus on what we want to aim for.
Especially because during the COVID time period, you couldn't get that one-on-one type stuff. Especially because during the COVID time period, you couldn't get that one-on-one type stuff. It's tough to do it over, uh, distance learning and stuff, so I, I would assume that affected a number.
Yeah, maybe. It probably had a variable in that for sure. The, the next, the next, uh, next goal is close the achievement gap between student groups. And basically what we're looking at are, are MCA scores. And we're looking at the highest subgroup compared to the lowest subgroup, and what that gap is in proficiency rate. And we want that gap, whatever that might be, to decrease by three percentage points from the two thousand twenty-one school year to the two thousand twenty-two school year. For this goal, there is, there's not a result. There is not, there's no state accountability data provided for the two thousand twenty-one school year. That's right in the middle of the, of the pandemic. The state just postponed, stopped two accountability measurements during that time. I'll have a result for you next year, and it'll be a fairer result when you look at two years of MCA's post-pandemic versus comparing when the pandemic, what happened. The next goal is all students clear and college-ready by graduation. And what we look at here is the ACT, and actually we look at the pre-ACT in tenth grade compared to the last ACT our students take. And we do define groups that are of at least twenty students. And we want to see a decrease of a half a point from when they take the pre-ACT to their ACT. So the results for this one, we look at the two thousand nineteen, twenty, grade ten pre-ACT composite scores. Our lowest group was students of color. They had a composite score of eighteen point five. Our highest group was white, twenty-one point two. There was a gap of two point seven points. When we looked at the graduating class in two thousand twenty-two, that gap actually increased to three point seven. And again, when we look at that, that is not what we want, and it is something that, that we're addressing when we look at that. One of the things that we immediately did when, when this, when we saw the results come out here this fall, um, I met with, uh, Jolene Herfeller, preschool principal, we reviewed the data, we broke down the data for departments, uh, departments now have looked at the ACT results, and we're really pinpointing by department exactly, if there's a gap, what is it that we need to do differently in our curriculum? Part of that is coming out of the pandemic where we had to do a lot of cutting and condensing of curriculum, and now we're back to normal operations. So let's make sure that we're aligned to the benchmarks of the ACT, and what can we do differently or change? And all departments are taking that very seriously this year. The other thing I want to share with you, uh, as a part of that, the graduating class of two thousand twenty-two, the ACT results, uh, composite was twenty-one point nine, and we're not satisfied with that. But I also want to point out to you, when we do look at the top fifteen percent, which is twenty-eight students, the top twenty-five students, the top fifty students, the top hundred students, we, we feel good about those composite scores. And the challenge for us is that we, we give the ACT to every student. So the discussions that I'm having with, uh, Mrs. Herfeller right now is really talking about what is it that we can do as for the whole student body to help prepare for the ACT? We do have the ACT academy, uh, for students that choose to sign them, but what are things we can do for everyone? Because we do know that some kids come in very well prepared, and other kids, they're confused, more preparedness. But again, those results would demonstrate that for our students, that, uh, they're preparing for the ACT, they're taking our most rigorous courses, that they're, they're doing fine.
On this, was this when every student had to take ACTs?
Yes.
Because going forward, that isn't a mandatory thing, right?
It's not mandatory, but we have to offer it to all students.
Okay.
And then students can choose not to take it.
What, what do you think that percentage is gonna go to?
Well, we're, we're, we're communicating, and we'll be communicating this year to families and students that it is important. It is important.
Yep.
And, um, you know, yes, I think there gets to be, uh, I'll use my own word, misunderstanding that when you're looking at colleges and universities, that it's optional. It is optional. But there's also merit scholarships that these colleges and universities offer students with ACT scores. So it is important. And, and we'll be doubling down on that message to students and families this year that this is something that you should take seriously to do your very best. If you're planning to go to college or to university, you could have scholarships and opportunities with higher ACT scores. So that has not changed.
Okay.
That has not changed.
Good. I'm glad I forgot that message on this.
Yes, yes. The last goal is all students graduating, um, you know, by the time they receive, uh, the senior year. And we set a graduation rate of ninety-five percent. The results, uh, for this year, and the, the latest results we have is for two thousand twenty-one. That's where the department runs. Eighty-five point nine percent, and I'm gonna give you a lot of context to that because you might think, wow, that's really low. There's, there's a lot of context to that. I also wanted to point out that the five-year graduation, graduation rate for two thousand twenty-one is ninety-seven point eight. Let me explain how this is calculated. So with the four-year graduation rate, you see over the left side at the bottom of the screen, the eighty-five point nine percent. You see the next column, the, the green bar, we have what's called continuing students, and there's twelve of them. Those are special education students that are in our transitions plus program, and they do not count for graduation. When they do graduate, they count. But because those twelve students in two thousand twenty-one continued on with their education, they're considered not graduated. So that does impact your four-year graduation rate. That's why I wanted to show you the five-year, because if those students finally graduated in five years, then we see that result. The dropout rate was three percent. So in two thousand twenty-one, this is right in the middle of the pandemic, the two thousand twenty-one school year, and so we had six students. Where, when you think of a dropout, they chose not to come to school, they, 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 they dropped out. The number that is perplexing is what is called unknown, and there's ten students, and those count against the graduation rate. And what that means is there are students that have moved out of state or may be attending a private school, and we were not notified of their school status. The state doesn't know what to do with that. So the state marks them unknown, because the state can prove, we can't prove that they actually moved, let's say, to Michigan and entered another school. That was not communicated to us. That's why that graduation rate at four years is what it is. Now, we don't like that because it's hard to explain that to a public, like, what's going on. And so what we're doing this year, we're gonna get very, uh, we beefed up our processes to address unknown students. We're gonna be very aggressive with, when we know a situation's happening, and we're not hearing from wherever the student has gone, we'll be being much more forward about finding out exactly what's happening. We want that unknown number. For example, up here in the five-year graduation rate, you'll see the unknown as one student. So why is there ten? I'm not sure. It's pandemic, there is a lot of movement, a lot of things happening, but we know that that is an outlier. And again, when you look at the five-year rate, it cleans up, and we do expect to be back up to the ninety-five percent rate for two thousand twenty-two.
Is that an unknown rate with younger grade levels, or?
It's anytime from ninth grade up to senior year. Yep.
How did the dropout go from six to three percent?
Well, it, it's different students.
Six students to three students.
Yeah, it, it's, it's different, it's different students. I mean, uh.
The five years for a year before this, then?
It's, it's a five-year rate, so it, it's what that means that, um, probably those three, they are to graduate in two thousand twenty, and maybe they got their GED or something. So it, it's, it's a, it's a different group.
Yeah.
It's a different group.
I think one thing that's very confusing is when you have students that are part of their individual education plan is that they choose to continue their education. The plan of a transition plus is that, that's the design of the program, that's what the parents, um, would like to continue on with the child's education. So you're, you're, um, working with students that are developmentally cognitively delayed, and those are skill-based trainings. To have that not look like they're making progress towards graduations, not a good representation. That's not, in my opinion, fair to the students. It's not a good judge of the system. Those first two columns should work together. The second two, those should be on their, their own, but when someone is following their individual education plan due to the needs of that child, that's, to say that they didn't meet the graduation, that's, that's not a fair representation of their efforts.
So the five-year graduation rate, that's just following the same cohort of students, add one additional here to see what happened?
Yes, exactly, exactly. And, and they, they have a six-year rate, seven-year rate, and it just, it just continues to clean up, especially the transition plus, the continuing.
I mean, how long can transition plus, how many?
Twenty-one.
Till twenty-one?
Okay.
Twenty-one, yeah.
You know, sometimes we're, we're so small, and we, we fixate on the percentages, but when the numbers are so small to begin with, and every little student here or there impacts the percentages.
It's really nice.
You know, it's really, it's hard to use this as a, as a true measuring stick for, for what we're doing, even though I know we have to report back to it, but.
What I, what I do, what I do like being about a small district is percentages become names and families.
Yeah, right.
And our goal is to work with every name and family to make sure they have opportunities. And so I think as, as, um, we look at a report like this, uh, the harder thing is what Mark said, is when you have people that leave your school, and whether they go out of state or whether they choose, they haven't enrolled in another school option in Minnesota, and our staff can only work with the kids that are here, obviously, but that's, that's a concerning, that's a concerning number, and we, it.
Especially transcripts and stuff have to go someplace. If you, if they go to another school, you'd think there would be a request for grade scratch or something.
I mean, is that a commonplace thing, that school to school, they, they update on this, or, I mean, I don't know, I guess I sort of feel like that's a little bit of a reporting error, or not error, but reporting, um, you know, grayness that.
Yeah.
How can we control that again, Kathy?
I've never seen an unknown number so high.
Oh, really? Okay.
This is an outlier. It, it's an outlier. It, it really is, and, and we've had lots of discussions about, okay, what, what is it that we, we reflect on ourselves first, what can we do differently? What, what is it that happened with these, these students that left the district? I mean, they left.
Yeah.
And, and they, they could have gone to an online program someplace too. I mean, they, they simply left, and, and.
But they had to leave, uh, as part of their senior year, or could they have left any time in their four-year?
Any time in the four years.
Oh, okay. So someone who left first semester of their ninth grade year would be counted in that? Okay, I see.
So that's where our processes are gonna improve, that we're making sure we're double-checking, like, it's, for those, like, way back in ninth grade, if, okay, we never got notification from wherever they left, you know, it becomes a little bit off the scent, out of mind. We, we can change that. We can change that.
Mark, I, I really appreciate the detailed report. I, I would, uh, comment, one, um, just a lot of excellent results overall in the district. Obviously, going through, uh, this report, and we look at goals that we want to improve upon. The intentionality, the focus that you and the staff give to things is why we get the results that we saw earlier. And so as, not year by year, do you see some of those benchmarks met? You don't stick on the excuse of what the country, the world went through. You really focus on what we can control. One thing I want to share with the board is really appreciate how you dedicated dollars to class size reduction so that we could have teachers work with smaller groups of kids, and so that we can apply these skills to try to help these students. Appreciate Mark's work on the language arts adoption, uh, and the understanding of what we need to address with our curriculum, and really investing in a lot of writing, as he talked about the phonetics. I think there's also a look at, when we talk about ACT, what we care about ACT is the goals that kids are college-ready. There's a balance of how you prep for a test and how you prep kids for college. And I'm interested, obviously, that our kids are very competitive in getting their schools, that they're competitive with merit scholarships, et cetera. But teaching to the test is less my concern, it's just making sure that they're set up. And I think when we look at a lot of our families that make that next transition, uh, we, they find, they find success there. But I appreciate the drive of continuing to work at these numbers, and obviously, there's always things for us to work on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, um, would just, uh, start by saying it's, it's already December. Boy, some days are long, right? And then all of a sudden, you look at the calendar and bam, you're, you're December, and we're going through things, just, um. In so many ways, just really appreciative of the school year that we've had. We've had a lot of positive things, and obviously, we, um, talked to staff, and it's really appreciate, uh, working with our kids, working with our families. We had a lot of fun things that happened with fall activities this year. And it was just, uh, really exciting to see school pride and communities come together, and just seeing some of our different student groups. Serenity does such a nice job of speaking, but she, she often highlights a lot of those efforts that our kids are working on, and pleased with that. Wanted to just highlight a couple things that are of your action items. One, um, we have Mike Nelson here. Mike Nelson's the president of Dasher. We're approving that contract. Dasher provides our custodial and maintenance oversight, also our maintenance work and some of our administrative assistant work. And so that contract helps fund three leadership positions for our custodial group, and we're pleased to come to an agreement with, uh, Dasher here for the next, next couple of years. And so, Mike, thank you for your work with that, and we bring that agreement to the board. Mike, I don't know if there's anything you were wanting to say, but.
We're very honored, appreciate the opportunity. We've had work for the district here for quite a few years. I didn't look up exactly how many it's been, twelve, fifteen, I think is what it is. But anyway, thank you very much for your consideration tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the good job you do.
Thank you.
Uh, Kathy spoke well to, uh, the levy. I'm not gonna spend more time on that. We have several action items having to do with activities, and Jeff Peterson, our activities director, is here tonight. We're looking at changing some of our oversight and able to, uh, meet the needs of a growing list of activities. And when you look at what we offer, and one thing I love about our school board, I love about Jeff, is someone has an idea or a passion of what they want to get involved in, we're gonna figure out a way that it can happen. And when you learn that there's a child that's interested in name it, there's different, everything from clubs to sports, just a lot of ways. And our goal is, we want kids active, we want them involved, we want them to participate, we want them with a positive mentor or coach, we want them to be part of a team. And so we always try to find a way to get yes to that. And saying that, there's a lot of oversight, there's a lot of supervision, there's a lot of coordination, there's transportation, there's referees, the list goes on. And so Jeff looked at how he could restructure with a retirement that's coming up, and what we're looking at is reducing an administrative assistant position to half-time. We have a support person that helps, uh, Jeff with fifteen hours a week. We're looking at reducing that position. And in exchange of some of these funds, we're looking at adding an assistant activities director. And the key with that is that this person will be able to assist Jeff in the supervision and the coordination, which goes with that job title. So we're looking at an individual contract. We would be posting this tomorrow. So we're looking at an individual contract. We would be posting this tomorrow if it's approved. And we would be looking at trying to fulfill. I would say that you can appreciate from the simplicity of the scope growth of activities to just the necessity that activity directors feel the need to be present at events these days with what's going on with crowd management, that there's an extra pressure there. And I think one thing that Jeff does a very good job of is, he's very approachable, and he's almost always present. And so Jeff, I don't know if there's anything that you're hoping to say, but I appreciate your efforts, and I think this is something I definitely support.
Just if there are any questions about, I guess I'm calling it kind of a restructure. So it's a big, you know, this, it's a big job, and appreciate the support that you provide and the opportunities that our kids have, but it's also a big job. There's a lot that goes with it, and February will be my tenth year here, which seems like it was yesterday. But we've not reduced any activities. We've just added in that time period. And I'd say it's kind of like a cake where there's a lot of different layers when you add things. There's just, if you want it to look good on the outside, and you want the experience to be good for kids, a lot of things have to happen on the, you know, kind of on the backside. Or if you think about an iceberg, everything underneath that, just so you can get to that spot.
So a DQ cake?
Yeah, DQ cake. So anyways, just if there was questions about the, about what that might look like, or how it might function, I just wanted to hear an answer.
Does this person have to coach cheer?
No, that position's been filled.
Oh, good. That's great.
So is the, this assistant coach, or not coach, sorry. So are they going to do all the administrative stuff that Lynn Peterson was doing?
So, good question, Ralph. Should I go up there? Am I good?
Come on.
Okay.
Because we're talking about reducing staff as well, right?
So right now, the, basically looking at three separate job descriptions. And obviously, the work that Lynn Peterson had been doing in forty hours can't be done in twenty. So some of those responsibilities will be shifted to the assistant activities director, and some of those may slide over onto my area. And some things that I'm currently doing, I'm going to have support with. And so I feel like with the reduction of the assistant, administrative assistant, that between the two of us, we can handle those administrative jobs as well as a lot of other things that are within those responsibilities.
So, and so then, this new position then, is this, in terms of the amount of money that it'd be expensed on us, is it relatively the same as before in terms of what the prior position was? When we're talking about such a big.
I would say that we're probably about five to ten thousand.
So we're reducing Lynn's position from forty to twenty, eliminating another SSE position, and then adding a full-time.
Correct.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, correct. So I mean, in the, when you put it all together, we're talking about a five or ten thousand dollar difference? Is that what it's saying?
Where are you looking to find the assistant A.D.? Because, I mean, obviously, that's going to be a stepping stone position. I mean, if you can keep somebody for a couple of years, and they get a couple of years on their belt, they're going to be looking to be an A.D. someplace. So where do you go to find that type of person?
Well, that's, you know, that's always the interesting part. But we'll post the position, and I think if it was April, we might be able to find maybe some potential teachers that are looking for that type of a role, but right now.
You might find somebody that's committed to this community or this district, but you know, it's looking long-term to stay and not.
Potentially. That would be the best thing, but you're right, this, you know, there isn't a lot of opportunities for people to gain some of the experiences that you need to do the activities director position. So it could be that it could be a revolving door. But it also could be, like Lauren said, somebody who's committed to our community and somebody who wants to stay here and learn those skills and provide support.
I don't know. Lauren was correct, because that would be good, because it's a huge expense to keep training people every other year.
I mean, do other schools have this formal position?
Everybody's, it's a good question, Ralph. Everybody's district is a little bit, it's a little bit different. Some districts smaller than us and some districts larger than us have their activities director as an assistant principal as well. So they're in that realm, and then they have different support staff that helps in those areas. Some districts barely have an administrative assistant. I don't know how they do that. But, you know, I do brag a lot about the opportunities that our kids have here. We have tremendous opportunities for a district our size. And, you know, with that comes a lot of different things that go with programs, so.
One of the things I always remember too is, you know, when we were going through school, it wasn't the activities director, it was the athletic director. They focused on that. We're, a lot more things have been added to the director's position. I heard a rumor that they changed the name because you weren't at all athletic, and so it was the activity director. I think that's not true.
You shouldn't listen to those rumors.
So Ralph, you know, some districts have an athletic director, some have an activities director, so they're split there. It's just, it's a little bit different everywhere you go. I'd say the larger districts all have an assistant. And when I say larger, I'm looking at Hopkins, Waisata, maybe more than one.
So we're not doing something totally novel here?
No.
But I would probably even push the other way of saying that we're trying to utilize resources in a way that can give oversight. And with the different positions, if you are in a bargaining group that does not include supervision, that's not something we can ask of that person. And so we're trying to find a way to reduce costs and make sure that we can provide a safe, positive experience for our kids. I think our first step is what we're presenting to you today. Then we'll review that. And if we feel like we can improve upon that, like all things, we'll adjust. I think that this is a good step at trying to keep this fairly cost neutral and accomplish that goal.
I take it sooner than later, right?
Yeah, Lynn unfortunately, her last day, I think, is the thirteenth of January, so it's pretty quick. So, you know, when you think about, when you think about the holiday winter break, and somebody who might have a job that needs to provide two weeks' notice, we're, you know, we're in the middle of January.
Please say you posted tomorrow with some approval tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other items, you'll see an action item for approving a grant with Hennepin Youth Sports. Hilltop applied for a grant for redoing their playground, and they're awarded a twenty-five thousand dollar grant for that purpose. Their PTA and others have been working on securing funds, and so you're agreeing in that action that I can sign off on it. And then lastly, there's a first reading of the memorials for deceased students or staff. There's a couple of changes that we ran through our policy. The reason why I bring note of that here is I'm now in my, this is my seventeenth year in doing this job. And this is the first time I've been asked on a facility rental for a service. And so that is, that's pretty unique. And in that policy, it says that I can engage in that rental. And in our community, they're looking for the space to be able to hold that service. And so it's, it just shows that you do something right long enough. I remember looking at how you would close a board meeting, and it said pandemic was like one of the only reasons. I said, well, that, when does that language ever get in the nose? Bam, that hit me. So never, never make that comment until when something's going to hit you until you really want to see it. But I think, I'll say this a lot in my communication, the thing that's really kept Jill and I in this community is it acts as a community. We're here to support each other, and it's not throwing up hurdles, it's trying to come together and solve ways. And so I think right now, Kelly, the answer to your question, I think a lot of different groups are coming together with this family and for other families that are coming to need of how do they support the kids, how do they support families? And it's, right now with the Curls, there's also, we're coming up on the year anniversary of Tommy Nash's passing. That's, there's going to be a service on Sunday night for that. And I can just tell you with our staff right now, there's a number of different things that are going on. And hardship, hardship has a lot of storylines. And so I think there's a lot of opportunities for people to come together. Clearly, this latest one with the Crawl family was the shocker, and so just really tough. But I'll be, I'll be, if that's what the family chooses to do, we will work and try to form that rental agreement for them so they can be able to utilize some space here so they can do the service as they hope.
Thank you. Chair moves for approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Move on discussion items. Discussion item eight A, chair moves for approval of the resolution to adopt the twenty-twenty-two payable twenty-twenty-three levy. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Chair moves for approval of action item eight B, approval of adding assistant activities director's position. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Chair moves for approval of action item eight C, approval to reduce EOE position from forty hours to twenty hours per week and increase the number of workdays from two-hundred-and-seven to two-hundred-and-ten. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair moves for approval of action item eight D, approval to eliminate the activities office general, office professional, SSE position. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair moves for approval of action item A D, approval of the first reading of policy sixteen hundred. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair moves for approval of action item A F, resolution to accept a grant agreement with Hennepin County Youth Sports Program and authorize Superintendent Borg as a signing authority. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Got a lot of them.
Yeah.
Chair moves for approval of action item A G, approval of addendum to the Dasher Management Service Contract. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else to come before the board tonight? If not, I want to wish everybody to have a very merry Christmas and holiday season. And thank you for all your work on the committee, you guys, you're doing a great job. Things are feeling really well, so thank you. With that, I'd like to move for adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?